We would all start with a moment of silence. If you would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'll ask if everybody makes sure that their cell phones are either turned off or on silent so that we do not have any disruptions. City Clerk Domingo, if you'll take role call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
President.
Lee.
President.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Lanu.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler, Lanu.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. We will start this evening with proclamation for Arbor Day. So Tree City, USA, official proclamation, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor of the City of Albion, Michigan, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Albion. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this day, the 4th day of April, 2022. And next, we have a presentation. Do we have Michael Gears on? Okay. For our Munitech, Munitrix?
I am here. I think I will need to be given the ability to share my screen, if possible. You may see two Mike Gears. Kevin just changed his name. So Kevin is your account implementation and client manager. So you're sharing your screen, I believe, but I need to share mine. Can you see my screen?
And then just hit stop sharing. There we go. Okay.
Are you seeing my screen?
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you for being customers. I'm on your homepage, and I wanted to illustrate that you have our logo with you. And what this allows is people to come in for transparency purposes and look at a limited amount of information on our website. What I wanted to share with you is two points of information. So when someone clicks on our logo here, we count those clicks. And from 2018, you've had a steady climb with 2021 with 462 unique clicks on that logo. So you've had a pretty much a steady doubling every year. This will change throughout the year. You've already surpassed, and this was about two weeks ago. So you're more than a quarter, you're a quarter of the way, and you're more than a quarter of the way from last year. So this will pick up. The second one, I'll show you. This is a month-to-month account for just over two years. So you can see last October, you had almost probably 86, 87 unique clicks on the Munitrix logo that took them to our site with the limited information. So that's, so when I do this, and click on this site, I'm logged in, but what I'll do is to take you to an incognito site, which will show that I'm not logged in. Everyone is just familiar with what is available to the public from Munitrix when they do click on that link. It'll take a second here to load. So this afternoon, I put these graphs up here for you just to illustrate how much of information we could give to people for transparency access. If they want to go in and look at your amended budget, they can click this, and they'll still get just a limited amount of information. And if they wanted to go in, let's say, and look at the revenues, they have to accept this user, and then they can see this and look over it. So it gives them a little bit of open access to your expenditures and your revenues. And again, I'm not logged in, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to look at what some of our other customers are doing. So for instance, Highland Township, they've embedded our, part of our website into their website. So people can look at different pieces of information that are part of Munitrix without leaving the township website. And again, they have access to look at this information, but they stay on the website. So this is something else that you could do. This is Lincoln Park. If I go to their homepage, and in their finances, they've embedded our dashboard. Again, this is something that you can do. And depending on how much information, there are about 40 different data points here that you can put in here depending upon what information you can give us that we can help put in. And then if they want to, like, go to your website, this will give them that link to the Munitrix website within Munitrix. So there's different ways that we can raise more transparency and create greater trust for you just by embedding different pieces instead of just our logo. That's just for your information. Let's go back to your website. Now, I am logged in, and I just wanted to show you what's available here. With our financials, some of these reports.
Mr. Gears, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I was really impressed with the introduction you provided at MML in terms of data visualization. And I think if you could just give a little background about what Munitrix offers in terms of making the invisible visible, that might help contextualize some of these other data points.
Okay. So one of the things I was going to point out, your subscription is a transparency subscription that allows you to do transparency and CVTRS. Some of the things that the premium edition would give you the ability to, and I've enabled this for our demonstration, but I created this peer group. This allows us to create a peer comparable relationship. So I've chosen Marshall, Springfield, Sturgis, and Three Rivers. Again, I can add peers, and I can look at. So I've tried to find locations with similar populations within, within, within a short amount of distance from Albion. And when I go and start looking, how my, this is the one that most people like, is how my community compares. Here we have expenditures per capita, and down here we have annual expenditures. And so we see over here, Sturgis spends the most. Springfield spends the least. We have an average line, you're just under average of $875 per capita on expenditures with Marshall, and again, Sturgis having a little bit more. And again, this is something that you can put into some type of report. And again, the accompanying data table is right here below. The other of these reports, and I'm trying to keep your time to, our time to a minimum for your meeting, but this is our data, Financial Data Explorer. And I can look at this by per capita or percent of total, but if I stay with per capita, I'm looking at expenses. I'm going to go to the most current year where we have information for everyone, 2020. We're looking at general funds only, but if I want to see expenditures and I want to compare how we do with these four other entities, I can look at my police department, my fire department, and let's put how much we're spending on libraries. And that immediately comes up, and so you can see on a per capita basis that you spend just $182. As we go up the line, $228. So when you're looking to see how you spend your money compared to some of your neighbors, this allows you to look at it a per capita basis. Sometimes percent of total can also be very informing. So 16.4%, 44% versus 21. So you're spending the least amount in police department. According to your data, you don't spend anything for fire, but you can see some of the other communities spend around 10, 11%, 7, 8%. If I want to look at revenue and see where the money's coming from, how much is coming from federal contributions? How much is coming from state revenue sharing? Personal income or property taxes. We can, again, guide these, you can guide these categories based on what's in the system for this, for your municipalities. So again, percent of total, Sturgis spends the highest amount, 11.0, almost 12% on, or gets most of 12% almost through federal contributions. Property taxes, 45% of your revenue comes from property taxes. So again, it gives you an easy way for you to compare these parameters. Lastly, what I wanted to do is show you two things. You have the transparency, which gives you some budgeting tools, the compliance reporting, CVTRS, the open checkbook, if you want to take advantage of it. In 2016, I believe, we looked, and there was one month of check registry in there. What the premium edition gives you is a capital improvement manager, debt manager. You can do more with your budgeting, forecast, and building. You get the peer group benchmarking. We can do some things for staffing. You get the project manager, scenario builder. Those are the basic components of what the premium subscription offers. One of the things that Linda was interested in was a capital improvement planning tool. So if I go to Romulus, since you don't have that access, and I go to their capital improvement planning, just to give you a sense of what this tool could do. Romulus was asked, approached by Amazon to consider putting up one of their big distribution centers. And of course, Romulus was very interested, and Amazon said, "Great, we just need your capital improvement plan." And they said, "What?" So they came to us, we helped them create their capital improvement plan. And the best way to illustrate this is go to see what the plan looks like. And so in the reports, we can designate your capital improvement plan by department, by fund, by building, by asset group, priority, by project. We have the ability here to create scenarios. So here, there's a baseline, there's a scenario A, you can create multiple scenarios. And if I go back to the report, and I look at my scenario chart, here's my baseline. But if I didn't take into account, or if I chose only certain projects, this is going to show me how my capital or my general fund and capital improvement annual cost will look like. So it gives you the capability, and then most people also like this, is we have a GeoMap that's color-coded based on the six departments. So this here is a capital improvement for general government. This happens to be fire station. This is police. This is park and recs. So again, it allows you to look at your projects geographically. So again, we've got a park and recs up here, and we've got a small project. The size of the dot is also significant to the amount. So here's a small $3,200 project there. So that's a quick overview of the capital improvement project. Again, once you get to the report, it's a long report because there's so many projects in here. You can print this final report and link it to your homepage, or if that's something that you would want to consider. So let me just stop sharing. I do want to mention Kevin is new with us, last couple months. Kevin came to us from Battle Creek, where he was budget officer and also Munitrix user, and helped them incorporate priority-based budgeting. So he's a person, the go-to person for you in terms of any questions, any support. And when we get into the CVTRS season, Kevin will be there to help you. So we appreciate this. What questions may we ask or answer for you?
Well, I just wanted to thank you both for being here this evening and sharing that demo of things that are available. I did speak with City Manager Snyder about this after asking to have this on the agenda, and look forward to seeing how this can be something that fits into the work that's already happening, and then just further leverage that to increase the visualization of data that we already have, and then see where we can continue to build that out.
Yes, if I could just echo Councilmember Lawler, Lanu's comments. Thank you for taking the time to guide and give us an overview of the service that we already have, and then additional resources that we could have through the premium upgrade. Myself and Finance Director Need, we will be reaching out to you right now. We are prepping for our audit, so it's a busy time within our finance office, but we will be scheduled to follow up to kind of go have more in-depth conversation on the premium. That way, then we can come back to council to make a formal recommendation on if this is something we would like to upgrade to or not. But I just want to thank you for taking the time to present the information.
I know that was kind of a rush job. We want to respect your time, but we're here to be good partners with you. You'll probably see an interesting announcement in the next week or so as we continue to grow and develop and add more resources and features to help support municipalities and school districts within the state of Michigan. And I'm coming to you from Albuquerque because we're growing and expanding. So thank you very much.
Michael, can I ask, though, what is the price difference between the two packages?
Basically, on a pro-rated basis, if we were to turn this on, it's already April, so we wouldn't turn it on officially till May 1st, which would then be coterminous. You would be looking at a pro-rated cost of $1,400. Your transparency annual cost is just under $3,000. And so it goes, it just doubles from transparency to premium for the annual amount.
And then what would be the full premium amount?
It's like $5,900 come November 1st, I believe, when your anniversary date.
So almost twice as much?
Yes. Now, in complete, because you've been a longtime customer, if you chose to want to work and look at the premium edition and have those features, and then come November 1st, you said, "You know, this just didn't do anything for us," we could go back and go back to the transparency cost. We wouldn't force you to keep using premium if that's not something you wanted to do.
All right. Thank you for that information.
My pleasure.
Thank you both for being here.
Have a good evening, everybody. Thanks for inviting us.
All right, next, we do have a public hearing on our CDBG block grant for Victory Park improvements. So we will go ahead and open this up for the public hearing. Do I read the resolution, or?
No, I can provide an overview on what our application is, and then we can open it up to the public to answer any questions. Hopefully, this will kind of give you a better understanding of what we're looking to utilize these dollars for. So the MEDC, they have a grant opportunity. It's a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, Public Gathering Spaces. So we are looking to submit an application in the amount of $1 million to go towards improvements at Victory Park. With all of the most recent trainings and seminars that I've attended regarding all of these grant opportunities that are coming out with, from the state, they really encourage collaboration. So with our grant application, we are looking to collaborate with Swinging at the Shelf, which is a nonprofit here in town. They hold Sunday events in the summer with the free music every Sunday, as well as the community foundation. So we are looking to show that collaboration, there are collaboration efforts here going on in our community. So through this application, we are looking to increase the usability and accessibility of the Victory Park Band Shelf, the children's play area, the large park pavilion, and then the smaller park pavilion currently in Victory Park. We do have Caroline, who is representing Swinging at the Shelf, so I'll turn it over to her here in just a few minutes to kind of share, speak a little bit more about the improvements to the band shelf. With this, the large park, the large pavilion in Victory Park, it is in rough shape. So with this, thank you to the De Nicola gift that was recently given to the community foundation. A part of that gift was to redo the roof for the large park pavilion. So those are where the dollars are coming from that we were able to utilize as the required 10% match. So we have $100,000 that we're able to leverage all of these projects to seek the $1 million to really do a nice improvement to Victory Park. The large pavilion, it needs a lot of love, so we're looking to put a new roof on that, as well as the smaller park pavilion. It is a small wooden structure. We would look to put a new roof and then replace the wooden support beams to really kind of give that a new uplift. In addition, the, kind of how the community foundation comes into place, so they are the holder of the De Nicola funds. But in addition, there has been a perpetual care fund set up for the Victory Park, the play, children's play area, that was put out by a group of volunteers that roughly, it's kind of been a while now. So, but they have that perpetual care fund that we are looking to, with this grant, the play area is covered by woodchips. As you can see, it's not the best right now. It needs to be replaced every so often. So similar to what we're doing at the playground in Macintosh Park, we are looking to put the floor and play rubber flooring in that play area. This will make it more accessible for wheelchairs, strollers. It just makes it easier to navigate through that. We don't have to worry about replacing all of the woodchips. Actually, when that play area was first installed, the woodchips went all the way up to the play area. If you go out there now, that has slowly declined, greatly declined, so it's barely just covering the ground right now. So we really want to improve that play area, so that's where we're going to collaborate with them to utilize some dollars within that fund as well to get the play area. So I will hand it over to Caroline, so she can speak on behalf of the Swinging at the Shelf.
Thank you, City Manager Snyder, and good evening, Councilmember and, Councilmembers and Mayor Snyder. My name is Caroline Hurtow. I serve as a volunteer board member for Swinging at the Shelf. We are a nonprofit entity that has been hosting between seven and eight live, family-friendly music concerts at the band shelf for, we're going on our 18th season. All concerts provided at the band shelf are provided free of cost to anyone who attends, and that is made possible through strategic and loyal corporate and private donors to our nonprofit organization. We have been caretaking of the band shelf for the last 18 years at our own cost, which sometimes includes bathroom repairs and painting, making sure that it is a usable space for the entire community, but also for, for the concerts that we bring to Albion. And so we are excited to have the opportunity to partner and support this application by the City of Albion for the CDBG dollars to enhance all of Victory Park, which includes the Victory Park Band Shelf. After 18 years, we've begun to think, how, what do the next 20 years look like for Swinging at the Shelf and for Victory Park? And so we're excited to work potentially for a phased improvement to the area that will benefit the full park. First and foremost will be accessibility to the bathrooms and usability of the bathrooms. They are the only bathrooms in Victory Park at this time, and they are not friendly to children or adults. And with significant investments being made in other play areas in the park, having usable and family-friendly bathrooms is a high priority. Additionally, stabilizing the band shelf structure. It is a historic structure built in the 1940s, and it is in, it is in great shape, but if we don't take the effort to maintain it now, it will decline. It is exposed to the elements 365 days a year, and so it is in need of a partial flat roof on the back. And there's also some sidewalks that need to be placed around the back that'll make it easier for anyone who is visiting the park to access the bathrooms, no matter their level of accessibility, so if they're in a wheelchair, using a walker, or toddlers who have trouble walking on uneven ground. The phases two, three, and four of the project focus primarily on accessibility to the band shelf and the surrounding area, which include paved paths across the, small paved paths across the front of the band shelf that would allow individuals to travel down sidewalks on the side, and then travel in the center of the band shelf. So the individuals who don't want to be confined just to the top of the hill for any event that's happening, whether it be live music, or a church service, or a wedding, they could access the center and closer to the front of the stage on a stable footing versus the uneven ground that we have there in the park. So we are excited to partner and are in full support of all improvements happening in Victory Park, and are excited about the opportunity to support this grant that the city is hopefully to submit here shortly. I'm happy to take any questions on behalf of Swinging at the Shelf, or the band shelf improvements specifically.
Do we have any questions or comments for Caroline?
I, I.
Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember.
Caroline, you, thank you for being here this evening and providing that information.
Caroline, you, thank you for being here this evening and providing that information. You mentioned, it sounds like, four phases, and I just, I guess I didn't realize that as I was reading the application. Is that, are those phases kind of outlined in the information?
You can go ahead and take that, Haley.
The only phase that is not included in our grant application is Phase 1, so they are looking to get started on that part of it. So, requirement to utilize CDBG dollars, you cannot start any of the work prior to receiving approval. So, that is one part that they did want to get going before this season, but the remainder of the phases, which are included in the packet, they are included in this grant application.
Okay, that helps me. I guess my, I'm just curious, because it helps me seeing things in stages, that's how my mind works, and so I was just curious if it's outlined in that way, like the Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, is that included?
Briefly included on the renderings. I don't have the copyright in front of me. I'm happy to provide that information to you, and it is in very small print on those architectural rendering, but I can certainly provide that to you via email, if you prefer.
Yeah.
But it is outlined generally from the architects that we paid to have do the renderings.
It's a requirement of the grant application to supply the renders, but we can kind of note the phases within the narrative, within the application, so it is kind of outlined.
Perfect, thank you.
And just to highlight, with this grant application, this will allow for a lot of work will be done in all, not all park spaces, because we have so many here in our community, but all of the major park spaces this year. So, in addition to, hopefully, if we are awarded these grant dollars, we all know about the splash pad and playground that is coming to Macintosh Park, but then Holland Park, they are also seeing some action this year as well, with the addition of the ADA compliant walkie path to the new large park pavilion. There'll be some horseshoe pits installed, as well as the new grill pits will also be installed this year. So, a lot of work has been, is going to go into all of our park spaces. I believe roughly when you total all of the projects, we're looking at 3 to 4 million dollars going into the city's park spaces, which is huge. And I think our residents, they deserve to have some of this work put into our park spaces so that we can continue to take pride in our parks and maintain what we have. I also want to note that these projects were identified in our most recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This grant application was presented to the Recreation Advisory Commission last week. The board was very supportive of it and very excited about all of the projects that we have going on in all of our park spaces. So, again, that will make our application even more attractive and hopefully give us additional points when they go over scoring, because that's why we have the master plan too, and these grant applications are, our grant opportunities are ways that we can make these projects come to life. So, we are very excited to continue to finalize this application, and I'd be happy to share that with all members of council once it is finalized. So, this is just the next step in getting approval to get this submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Oh, did you help, you by the orders?
Yeah, just a quick one. City Manager Snyder, once the grant is submitted, the timetable for completion, what are you guys thinking?
So, this, we would not receive notification if we are awarded these dollars until late June, early July, with construction taking place next year. That is the timeline that's just outlined with the grant requirements. So, it does require that we have to submit for these bids for construction companies to complete the work, so we're looking at completion of next year, 2023. But I say, the Phase 1 for the band shelf, that will begin this year so that they can have that completed prior to this season of Swinging at the Shelf.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor Snyder. I just was thinking, as you were emphasizing, like illustrating the difference between wood chips and rubber.
Yes.
In the portion dedicated to universal design, I didn't see that, so it might be something just that further highlight, because that will make a huge difference. I know in the park spaces I've gone to that are rubber, it's like so much more enjoyable, but of course, there's the safety component too, as you imagine a wheelchair.
It's on page 10.
Thank you.
It's on page 10.
Turn it over to the public, so allow them to pick some of the application. Do we have any public comments, and we may have a like to stand for this? Do you like to state your name and address?
My name is Debbie Mengu. I live at 514 Linden Avenue, had been a resident there for the last six years. We're part of Precinct 6. We're happy about all the plans to improve Victory Park. Being the closest residential property owners, we're 20 feet from the spring. We're about 50 feet from the big outdoor arena. We just want to tell you what we see at the park, living there. When the parties and events happen under that outdoor arena, our understanding is that the city council is supposed to give approval for amplified sound. We just want you to know that the sound is so loud, it rattles the windows in our house. It makes it impossible for us to listen to our television. We can't have a conversation when it's going on, and sometimes it goes on from before noon till 5, 6, 7 o'clock at night. We're just not sure that that's fair for us. According to what we've read, it's not supposed to interfere with residents of the area or other patrons of the park. So, we're just bringing that up to you. It's ordinance 62-7. What we do when this goes on is we call public safety. They send an officer. The officer asks them to turn it down. As soon as the officer leaves the park, it goes right back up again. So, we're just hoping that maybe you can take that in consideration for us so that we can enjoy our home and property as well. Sometimes cars and trucks come, and they park, and they open up their sound systems, and they're just as loud as what goes on underneath the big outdoor arena, but I don't think they've come to you folks to get approval to do that. The next big concern we have is dogs running at large. I believe there's a leash law. According to 14.2 ordinance, people don't pick up after their dogs. That's 14.3. Sometimes the dogs are barking and growling at other dogs that are loose, as well as children or adults. The latest thing we're seeing is dogs being let out of vehicles to run the park while the owner is still in the vehicle following them around. That's not a safe situation. We'd like to see money made available to place some pickup potty stations throughout the park. That might encourage them picking up. They're not that expensive, under $100. We're also a little confused by the only big park sign that's there, and it states that the park is open dawn to dusk. There are people there way later than dusk. It says things like, "A child of 11 may be there till 10," or "A child of 12 may be there till 12." Why, if it closes at dusk, would that be so? And there's no dog rules listed saying anything about dogs on leash. So, and it says amplified sound, city manager approval, but the application to have amplified sound, state city council, as does the ordinance. So, those are our concerns. We support Victory Park. We're happy to hear that improvements are going to come. We'd like to see more people enjoy the park. That's not our problem. Our problem is being able to enjoy our property as well. Thank you. Any questions? We have some paperwork. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Renee Miller, 208 Booth Drive. Earlier this week, I was out at the park with my grandchildren, and I was, had a really good conversation with Ian, and I think it was the Assistant City Manager. She was pleasant. I enjoyed our conversation, and we, she was, they were out looking at the park and looking at different areas, and so I had an opportunity to engage with them. And because my grandson was insisting on going, we were the only one at the park at the time. So, I got a chance, as we were in the play area. I'm really excited about the changes and improvements that's coming. I think it's well-needed in Victory Park, among the other parks. I was glad to hear Mr. Williams asked what the timeline would be, because when we were out there and they, we were looking at some of the things that needed improving. Well, I know in the children's play area, I probably wouldn't maybe wait till next year to at least remove some of the things, because it is a safety hazard out there. Multiple major play things, like the tire that's underneath. And I know for me, being an adult, a lot of times when I go out there with my grandchildren, I'm playing with them, I sit on the bench right there inside the play area, but because we're so big, we're not getting under those spaces that the children are running under. But I know the big wheel was broken. The seesaw is, I tell you, it would not take anything for accident to happen out there. It's broken, and I know the bridge over.
The top.
The top, and adults can't get up there, so we don't know. And I just, another child came out there, and she was a little older, maybe eight, nine years old, and she said to me, she said, "Miss, this board is up here broken." And so, I just encourage you guys maybe to go back out and take a look and see what can at least be removed until we do the next one, so that we're not liable as a city for an accident.
So, yes, Director Arnold and Assistant City Manager Rich, they were out taking pictures for our grant application, and they did come back with several pictures of the equipment that needs to be removed. We are passing on to Director Miller so that we can get those removed until we have additional funds to get that, get those pieces replaced. We first looked at getting all of that, the pieces of play equipment in the play area replaced, but that, there's no shortage of need of improvements here in our community that drastically increase the cost that we would be looking to request, and unfortunately, we don't have the full match required. So, right now, we're just looking to do the core in place, but we are working to identify other grant dollars to take advantage of, to get the play structure fully repaired, and that's where that perpetual care fund will come into place as well. So, we are aware that there are some pieces that need to be removed for safety.
I myself have been contacted by some citizens, you know, very similar to your concerns about the play structure, just about the property around it, you know, going back to what Caroline said, the need for bathrooms, just so many needs in that one park. And it's not just kids that utilize. We have adults because of the disc golf course. We have people who, because of the bike trails, are utilizing that more because of, you know, the nice catways that are getting connected. So, there is a huge need. I think this is a perfect storm in regards to being able to have the grants available, being able to have funds already in place that we can leverage these grants so that we can make the improvements, not only in this park, but other parts as well. So, we know that these type of monies are not going to be around for long, so we definitely need to utilize them when they are present before us.
And so, one improvement with the bathrooms, we're looking, they will finally have hot water. As you all know, that the Albion River Trail runs right by the band shelf, so they were giving opportunity for bikers and people who walk along those trailways, that they can stop and use the bathroom, wash their hands with actually warm water. We're looking to add possible showerheads so that they can also stop and take a shower if they need to. With all the improvements that we're going, that are going into all of our play areas, our park spaces, we've also seen vandalism occur within this. So, we are looking to put timed locks on the bathrooms so that we are not investing all of these dollars just to have people destroy what we're doing. We're hoping, though, that these improvements will help our residents take pride in our park spaces and take pride in our community so that we will not hopefully experience any vandalism or destroy the great things that we're looking to add to all of the park spaces.
I think the next thing too, we need to take a look at is the animals, because I've seen some large dogs, and you never, never know when an animal is going to, even though the person is there that's walking with them, when they're going to see something that's going to track them in the wrong way, and they run at, you know, out to Holland Park, there was a dog that was out there that was chasing kids and snapping at them. And, you know, we, the gentleman who owned the dog finally got him a tone, you know, that was not a dog park, you know, so maybe we need to improve the dog park so that they'll take the dogs there and the children to the other parks, but I really don't think parks where kids play is a good place for animals to be.
Any other comments? Anyone else? We have any? Any other questions for Caroline before she heads off? Thank you, Caroline, for being here and helping explain some of the portions in regards to what we have for the band shelf.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Everyone have a nice evening.
Thank you. If you could go ahead, those are public hearing. Those are at 7:46 PM. And I am looking at your regulations, 2022/12, that some of the public gathering spaces.
So, both?
Debbie Mengu?
That's the number, Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Mill?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Right at this point, we will open up to public comment. If anybody would like to stand in regards to an agenda item, you have three minutes. If you'd just like to state your name and address, the doors are.
Can you hear me?
You're in, doors are.
Okay, is this, is this the first public comment?
Yes.
Well, one thing, Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street. One thing, I don't feel the, I don't think the YouTube is up, so I don't know if it's being recorded or telecast to YouTube, that's the first thing. The other thing, I think I probably missed, I don't know if I've missed the public hearing, but one of the things I wanted to just point out for the council's benefit and for the city's benefit is the grant application for Victory Park. One of the reasons why I feel the city was eligible for that was because of our rate of kind of like low income and poverty, right? And so, I understand that there are many needs in our park system, including Victory Park, so I'm not opposed to that, but I do feel like we have to make sure that if we're, if we are made eligible for funds because of the percentage of low-income individuals in our community, we need to make sure that when we do projects, that they are actually targeted in neighborhoods or parts of our community that are accessible to those people, because if we think about even our opportunity zone, most of our kind of derelict or areas that are in serious need of rehabilitation are in the northwest part of town, not the southeast. And so, I just, I feel as the council moves forward, we need to make sure that when we apply for monies or funds that we're eligible for because of poverty and low income, that they're actually targeted to those populations. So, I just hope the council in the future makes sure, you know, maybe there needs to be some kind of ordinance in place or resolution to kind of prioritize projects, but I think that's something that concerns me as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's your consent calendar in your packets. You had items of our March twenty-first, that is, that's a minute, and March twenty-first regular session, minute, and then the permit, the truce ball, what you want to roll for the four-year anniversary party. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I had a request or an amendment to the March twenty-first regular session meeting to remove the verbatim written communication and just say that written communication was provided by Mr. Atchison. And then also, I submitted another request to the city manager, and I didn't have a chance to see if you agreed to the...
I included clerk Domingo, that's responsible, she was aware, but I think you need to get council approval before, yes, before that those changes are made.
So the other request was with page forty-four of our packet at the bottom. It's a very minor edit, but it says that Mayor Snyder asked that all citizens making comments should be directed to the mayor and the council as a whole. And at the time, what was said was that the public needs to have proper decorum and address to the council. And that was why I then asked Attorney Cavari to actually confirm that it is the mayor and council as a whole. So it was a small discrepancy, but there was a, a distinction there, and I put that in writing already for City Park Domingo to amend that.
I guess just as a matter of procedure, I think really there should be a motion in the second to approve, and then council will need to provide some amendments, and I would say vote on the amendment and then vote on the support.
Yeah, I thought that was supposed to be part of the agenda in regards to...
Say that again, I'm not sure.
It's on the consent calendar now, so what, does that just be approved, it's all, it's a proof that it's correct, unless you want to pull something?
Right, unless you want to pull something or amend something. I mean, if you vote on it as, so what I'm suggesting is you do a motion to approve in a second, and then council will renew, have to identify if an amendment should want to be taken from there. There's still vote to approve the entire thing, but with the, if she wants to address an amendment, so I guess it's a vote in the second.
Would I, would we just say we're voting to approve with the said amendments?
You could make a motion to approve with this amendment, you could do that.
I will to approve the consent, consent calendar with those amendments.
So move.
I think it's a board.
Support. But in regards to the letter, though, the letter is supposed to be part of the...
Well, I think what council...
Change to have the actual word that you took, that you submitted, instead of having the full letter be included. It was included because he requested that, we sent a...
Well, so I don't really, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't really agree with that. I mean, generally, when we have a public comment, it's, you know, Joe Blow, one, two, three Superior Street, big public comment, and I think tangentially, if somebody submits a written public comment, you know, it would be, you know, Joe Blow submitting of one, two, three Superior Streets, submitted a written public comment that was provided to council or something like that.
So just to confirm, and for people to understand, the consistency is not to say every word that is provided, what, that a public comment was provided.
That, that's what I'm, yes, sorry, didn't realize. If you were to recommend it.
Oh, yeah, I was just trying to understand, have it be clear, how I was understanding the part discussion.
But I would say, you know, like I, like I said, in the study session, if council wants to make sure that the public has the entire, whatever writing's been submitted by a member of the public, you can certainly decide, you know, hey, we're going to start including citizen comments that are provided to council in, as part of the packet, and then everyone has it.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there something you think vote now, is that...
Vote. Is it a second?
State what we're voting on, please.
Well, I guess I still have a question. So I guess in regards to being consistent, what we were agreeing to through the study session is that if we did have written communication, it would be part of the agenda, but not currently, is that correct?
Yeah, so the rules of procedure states that if we receive written communication that's distributed amongst council, and since that was provided to us just prior to the meeting, it wasn't included in the packet, but I, I guess it could be added into the packet material, I don't know where that would go, but I didn't think it was consistent with our minutes to have that included in the minutes.
But looking forward, we do want it in the minutes.
No, the package doesn't.
Does Mayor Snyder reading it allow entitlement to the minutes?
Generally, the way, and joking correctly if I'm wrong, but at least in my tenure as a city attorney, whenever someone has made public comments, or excuse me, has made comment on agenda item or has made public comment, it's usually reflected as the name, the address, and that they commented. If it's a member of council, it'll say, you know, this agenda item and comments were received from, it's a council member, Williams, or the city attorney or whatever. And usually, if, I don't recall a scenario where we've ever taken something in writing and had it read completely into the minutes. Now, someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall a situation where we've ever done that.
Not even if it's... It's going to be that there's not only not precedent, precedence for reading that, but that because there were personal impacts in and of itself, it was a violation...
Of the rules of procedure.
All right, so now we're, we're digging into the woods now.
So the, so the motion, I think this is really simple. The motion the council has before it and has been cited is to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to the regular session minutes that, the amendments, excuse me, plural, that council will renew as outlined.
And just to repeat those, it's removing the written communication and just saying that a written communication was provided by Mr. Atchison, and then adjusting that Mayor Snyder asked that the comments be made should be with the proper decorum and council as whole, but it was not said directed to the mayor, and that's why I clarified to Attorney Harkness. So just so there's a logic when reading through this.
Okay, sounds good. I'm up to speed now, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion, Mayor Snyder?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
So you have a motion to approve the YMCA's charter script.
I think we skipped...
No, that's a...
Nope.
But they consent. Yeah, they consent, okay.
We didn't do the, the Malibu.
Yeah, you did. It's all, it's all a two-man.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Motion to approve the Vatican High School, so move. I'll support.
Support.
I'm sorry, to Mayor Snyder. Yes, before we proceed, council, if you can make sure your mics have the green light on. I know mine was turned off, so you just have to push the button and it'll turn it back on.
Mine's turning, mine's blinking, though, and it'll go off. It'll go off here in a minute. Chief Kip wants to give me new batteries.
That may be it.
Yeah, mine too.
If it doesn't turn up, just make sure you are speaking loud enough, so that it is recorded or everyone can hear. But included in the, in your packet is the formal service agreement for, between the city and the Vatican YMCA to provide all recreation programming on behalf of the city. As city, city council, you guys approved their proposal at the last council meeting, so now this will just solidify that agreement. So the formal service agreement has been prepared by the city attorney, as well as reviewed by the Vatican YMCA's attorney, and they were, have approved the language within the agreement. So this agreement shall commence on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, and shall continue until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, with an annual sum of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. So we are recommending approval. Just to note, it's pretty similar to the service agreement that was put in place last year with just minor changes. Just the term of the agreement has been extended to complete the entire duration of the current parks, of the current recreation village. The annual sum has been increased from one hundred and fifteen thousand to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And we also added the right to subcontract. So through this agreement, the YMCA will be able to subcontract with other entities or organizations to provide recreation programming, and that is only recreation programming. Similar, I've had conversations with Joe Heine, the CEO of the Vatican YMCA. So any program that they choose to subcontract with, they need to just make sure that that service provider has a proper license in place, if there is one required for their recreation program. So she agreed with that, and that just is abiding by the terms that were included in the city's request for proposals when we initiated this process. We did remove the, the advisory commission that was requested by the Vatican YMCA, and we agreed to that. We now have an active recreation advisory commission, so any changes, any concerns that anyone may have regarding recreation programs here in the community, we can take that to the city's recreation advisory commission. They can make a formal approval, recommendation to city council. So that was removed, just because we currently, we already have an active board, no need to continue to make additional boards, and we're already struggling to get hard boards filled. So we are recommending approvals, that we can get going. I know she made comment that she has had several organizations reach out to her, wanting to take advantage of that subcontract. Springus is here, so we want to make sure that we have that funding in place, so we can get some of these programs going.
We have questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question about the, and I don't think my mic's working, but question about the subcontracting, do, do they have a policy that's, do they currently have a policy in place for that?
That I'm not sure, I can follow up with Joe Heine on that, but just we're talking, we just made sure that to abide by what we included in our request or proposals, that any organization that they agree or want to subcontract with, that they have the proper license in place to be able to provide those programs, just to, as a protection for the city of Albion as well as the YMCA. And then, so they will, it will be up to the Vatican, the YMCA's discretion on who they want to issue those subcontracts to. This, through this, we are hand, we are looking at them to provide the migration program. So it will be up to, to them to select on who they want to, to use with. I can say, I know the who organization has already reached out, AYSO has already reached out, so there are organizations looking to take advantage of partner with YMCA.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Snyder.
The, with regard to how, I heard you say that's only recreation programming?
Yes.
Could you kind of outline that definition, so we're all clear on how that's being determined?
So it's determined by the language for our village. Our tax dollars can only go towards recreation services or programs. So similar to what's been provided in the past, either a youth recreation program, summer camps, basketball, swim lessons, those type of actual recreation services, that is what our village dollars fund, so that is what they are looking to provide.
Okay, so I just, I'm like really big into details, so to be clear, I was hearing you describe, like, so youth development, when you're saying youth, that's youth development, not just sports? In terms of, I, I don't have the recreation village in front of me to know exactly how that's defined.
I would have to look back at the language, I'm not sure if it's, if it says youth development, but recreation programs.
It's, I think it's the same as the one that we did in twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, right? So I have that up, but that's helpful. Forgetting on the money part, it says to be used for the specific purpose of continuing to operate city of Albion recreation programs for young people, adults, families, and senior citizens.
Because when I think of recreation, I think of theater and nutrition and a number of things outside of sports, so that's why I just wanted to be clear where, how we're defining recreation.
That's a follow-up of, of the language of what we've been doing. And I don't believe those were a part of city recreation services in the past. I'm not sure, I could be wrong, but that's what, we're looking at recreation activities.
Okay.
Mayor from Jackson?
Yes, just as looking at some of more of the details, I just wanted to make sure we understood the purpose of what YMCA's there for. And it does have to do with a Christian association.
Yes, so they do not provide that, they do not provide those programs or services. They handle fitness, fitness and...
Yes, sure, I just was reading what it says inside of it, and what they stood for, their loyalty, their loyalty was, their loyalty was to, was to Jesus Christ, I was just making sure. They're supposed to be something to help each other.
It's different than, they're not providing like any faith-based programs, so it's just fitness and recreation programs.
Thank you Mayor Snyder. Also, just because you mentioned that there are several organizations who have asked and only a certain number of dollars available, to be clear in terms of managing expectations and what people can count on or rely on, is, is the process intended for subcontracting? The process is intended to be first come, first served?
Yep.
Apply as soon as possible if you have a program to be included in the potential to receive those dollars this year?
That's correct, and that'll all be handled through the Vatican YMCA, who Darnisha Berger is the program manager, so if they have anyone's interest in partnering with the life, I would strongly urge them to contact them if you were.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
And next is our approval of the local marijuana license for Anadream. We do have a copy of that in front of you. So move. Do we have a support?
Support.
Director?
And this is medical.
Good evening. So what you have before you has just in March gone before the planning commission after receiving review from myself, Director Meade, Chief Kip, Clerk Domingo, and City Attorney. And they have, this is a license transfer application for Anadream LLC, and they're transferring from a license that was previously held by Comco. Their site plan was also approved at the last planning commission meeting. Now, these two things are separate, but that is for them to put up about a ten thousand square foot pole barn essentially in the industrial park that they'll operate these two licenses out of. They have crossed their Ts and dotted their Is to the satisfaction of the department heads, and we are recommending approval.
Questions for Director Arnold?
So I, excuse me, thank you, thank you Mayor Snyder. I was looking, we only, you know, just get this right before the meeting, right at the meeting, I should say, so I saw correspondence from Attorney Harkness back in October twenty twenty-one, the issues with the application, and because it wasn't listed out, it was easy to, to read, so I'm just assuming that everything in that list is taken through.
Yes, so with, with the emails in there, I've not actually seen those myself, I'm just, this is hearing it secondhand from Deputy Clerk Beck, that those were the emails between her and the City Attorney Harkness verifying the deficiencies he found. between her and the City Attorney Harkness verifying the deficiencies he found.
Yeah, just and maybe to help answer your question, Councilmember, and just so you and the rest of council are aware, generally how the process works is so when the applications come in, they go to the various department heads and the various department and my office. They review the relevant sections. My office does kind of a comprehensive review. And so the, the clerk's office does not move those forward through to the planning commission and subsequently to the council until all the department heads have signed off on those, meaning the issues have been defined, if we've identified issues. So those are just copies of the emails of some deficiencies that we identified that have subsequently been like modified by the applicants.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I know that the, okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I, I, two things. One, I know the city manager mentioned this, I'm just going to mention it again, please make sure you turn these in after you, after you vote on this. And then number two, I just wanted to, I, I know it's been said already again, but it's a transfer, so it's not a new license, it's just an existing license being shifted to a new facility that has passed the comprehensive application process.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domeno?
Councilmember Lanu?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. We have a motion to approve the second reading and the adaption of permit 2203 for our mobile food vending.
Some of.
Support.
So with this one, I, I guess I would just ask if council has any questions? We've not made any changes since your first reading. If you've looked it over and seen something else that worries you or you have questions about, I'm available for that. But otherwise, looking forward to this getting approved so we can start implementing it on our end and it's, it's one of those ones where you make the law about it and then you, you tend to see more activity. So I think we're, we can look forward to food trucks operating more regularly in town. So any questions, I'm more than happy.
Questions for Director?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. So in our packets, we have, these are all reappointments, the word of review. They've served before, they reapply. So we need to make a motion to approve. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Or.
Do we have any questions in regards to the applications? City Clerk Domeno?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022 city council's strategic goals?
I would like to move that we make this a discussion and maybe approve them when we have our other council member, possibly even after this seat is filled. But I, I provided a lot of feedback and I, I guess I don't know what happens once they're approved, if there's any real significance to getting it approved right away or not.
Okay, great. So this sets the projects that you would like the city staff to work on this year and we will incorporate some of these projects into the budget for preparation. So I, I would move or suggest that we move forward with approving these. As discussed at the, these were determined by you all at the Saturday work session, the March 12th work session. We have six different key areas that you would like for us to focus on. And then at that same work session, you guys, once we identify different goals within each work session, I mean within each category, you guys, they prioritize them from one being essential down to a level four, which is deferrable. I have shared these with our department heads, so they are aware of what these are and are looking forward to moving forward to accomplish some of these goals. So I just want to reiterate what we discussed on that study session. That comes with you guys kind of determining what you'd like for us to focus and work on. And then it is up to city staff to determine the ways, the resources and how we are going to accomplish them. We also discuss you would like quarterly updates, so that is something that I will be working on this year to provide you with updates on where we're at with these goals that you have determined. I mean, create either a dashboard or a matrix that will come and kind of break down the, the level of improvement that we have. So I, I would not like to do like this, as I stated, we will begin budget preparation a lot sooner this year with me going off, what looks like for a good amount of time here in August. So I'd like to start working with my department heads to kind of get budget preparations going a lot sooner than we normally do.
Thank you. I, I would move that we approve it with amendments. I know one of the goals that I wrote down was misconstrued and so I just wanted to make that amendment and I don't know if anyone else needed to make amendments, but if we could approve upon the confirmation that this is reflecting the goals that we set.
So could you run a, add amendment, never?
Yes, yes. I, I sent that to the city manager earlier and, and just to share it with everyone, under community development goals, priority three on the second page of the goals, under investigate housing options, it says mixed use development. And if this is a goal that I wrote, which I don't see reflected anywhere else, I.
Yeah, so they, these were taken from the sheets that we had, like word for word from the sheets that were written.
Cause I, I wrote about income. I, I know for sure I wrote the word income and it wasn't about mixed use, it was about mixed income. And I'm pretty sure I wrote mixed income housing in relation to homeownership and the programs that Director Arnold's already working toward, but also just how, you know, the direction of development would go, being specific to the income component, not mixed use.
Okay, yeah. So under priority three, under community development, correct, you're changing mixed use to mixed income development?
Nope. So what I recall writing down was mixed income housing.
Mixed income housing.
So again, what I wrote in the email to City Manager Snyder, I think that this exercise was kind of just like putting ideas on a sheet and like these goals, I think deserve to be really flushed out and make sure we're all really understanding. Cause I remember when I spoke about mixed income housing, it was probably construed that I was talking about this, but I also was referring to increasing homeownership and making sure people have access to the loans and grants to do home improvements as well.
I think you look prior to that, once we put all the goals on there, then we did have further discussion and then council broke down into different groups and power to this day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, sorry, not to be the, the, the term of the group here, but I mean, technically the way we should do this is councilwoman, you should make, she's made a motion and you should identify the amendments that you have and then have the discussion about why those amendments are being made after there's a second amendment. Because I think like we're, we've got one motion and we're having a bunch of discussion on that and realistically, there hasn't been a second amendment. So that's how formal matter procedure I work processes. Make a motion and state like your amendments and then once somebody seconds it, have a discussion on it.
Again, I move that we approve this with any necessary amendments.
Some of.
Support. Support. If, if she already made the motion, pass it on.
Does she need to be specific on what she wants?
Well, I think, I think Councilwoman Lanu has already laid out one, one of the amendments.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so now that discussion.
So we got a motion to support?
Yes.
Was that one amendment correct?
Yes.
Any good discussion?
We support it.
I, well, I, I guess the, the discussion for me is just looking forward, oh, I guess, okay, sorry. The biggest thing that I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about is how we define what's written here. So the example of my amendment is one thing where it was taken to be something else. But there also, it says like improve street repair before the street plan is implemented. And so I had, I just had a question about what is, what are, what are we referring, is the street repair, the cleaning of the streets or?
I think that's just the general, but then now it falls on the city staff to determine to come up with how we will measure those successes. Think one, we've already begun that, but we provide you with the 2022 patch plan with Director Milligan. So that's a one step that we are taking to improve permanent road rates before we come up with an additional road funding to actually repair the roads. So the measure of success is what kind of be determined by city staff on how, what, when they determine the ways, the resources to accomplish.
Okay, okay. And I think that from, I mean, to me, when I think about the purpose of this exercise, from the perspective of a council member investing time in this work, it, I think it would just help if we can follow up and make sure, it, I don't think I put this down, but I know this is something that is really important to a lot of people. If we all understand what that means, then it'll be clear how we can support and work and know that we're all on the same page. And so then the same thing went into how we define equitable redevelopment. And I saw accountability just like hanging out here and I'm, I'm wanting to see those things be developed. So I, I guess I just wanted to be clear as we were having this discussion that this is something that came up as I was looking through and something I look forward to either having a study session or just incorporating into the, the workflow process for executing these goals.
And I think by having the quarterly updates on board to stand with that, it'll kind of, this will be a working document, so then you will be updated where we're at with this. I think you'll also receive updates on other projects that have been accomplished prior to quarterly updates, cause these are ongoing goals, their work is constantly happening weekly. So this is just kind of a start to give the direction on to our department heads on where the focus are for this upcoming.
Just one last question. Under our professional development, priority four on the third page, it says MME and I wasn't sure if that was supposed to say MML.
No, so MME is the Michigan Municipal Executive, so that's geared towards myself and then Assistant City Manager.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so I didn't know that we were going this far in depth in this today. Now, the timetable that you have for putting this to paper and setting the actual agenda behind it, where are we looking at?
So that is determined by the department heads, like I said, as we discussed in this Saturday session. So the, all of the priority ones, so those are immediate areas that you would like for us to focus on. So that is where we will look to tackle those first and then work down to priority two, priority three.
Okay.
So basically, once this gets approved, that's what they will do.
Right. Now quarterly, you said we'd be revising this as well. At that time, if we needed to give greater feedback or propose things that we've seen in other communities that be beneficial here, would that be at the time to address that or, or would it be sooner?
Then or, yeah, it could always be sooner. Like I said, I open it to if you have any questions, suggestions, reach out to me. You can always have those upfront conversations.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have concerns, not, well, let me say it like this. I think this is great. I wouldn't err for this meeting, but I think it's a great template. I do see some things in other communities that we could duplicate here and with the, the position that our community is, is currently in, I think we'll have access to a, a large amount of financing. We just have to put ourselves in a position to make sure that we can get it. But in turn, we'll be able to address a lot of the issues that were discussed in this. So yeah, I look forward to bringing more feedback on it. Thank you.
Any other comments? City Clerk Domeno?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the audit engagement letter for a manner of stereotin for the 2021 project?
Some of.
Support.
Mayor Director Meade?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. In your packet, you have the engagement letter, letter for the annual audit that the city has, is required to get each year. For this upcoming, well, it's for 2021, they'll be auditing, but of course, you know, we have to wait till after the year end for them to do it. They're talking a price you see on page seven of $37,250. Just to give you an idea, this is up slightly from $36,000 in 2020 and $34,300 in 2019. A little bit of it is just simply, they've raised their prices slightly each year, but it also, what a lot of it has boiled down to is the, what's involved in the audit. As we get more and more grants, they have to do like for, for one, if you exceed a certain amount of federal grants, you got to do a single audit. That alone is $3,000. And again, just with some of the ARPA money, you've got federal money, so the testing is a little bit more strict on the requirements for their testing. So some of that fluctuation or increase in price is simply just more of an issue of we now require more things to be done because we're getting all these additional grants and ARPA money and stuff. But we've had this audit firm for a number of years. They've held pretty firm in their price every year. I mean, there's only slight increases, some years there's no increase. So I think it's pretty reasonable that, you know, what they're asking this year and it is budgeted, we have the money there to cover it. So any questions?
Can you share when they will be on site?
Pardon me?
Can you share when they will be on site? I know we're prepping for that right now.
Yep, exactly. So this week, today, they started doing some of the remote work. Where they've got a portal where we're uploading, we have been uploading for a week or so, a lot of documents that they've requested. And we share information and questions and communication and stuff back and forth through this portal. But more than anything, it's used to upload, you know, reports and registers and all kinds of things like that that they ask for. And they've started the testing and kind of some of that kind of stuff this week, today. In fact, it'll be going all week. Then they will come on site on April, the week of April 18th. And they'll be here probably most of the week. If they can get a lot of it done this week remotely, of course, they wouldn't have to, you know, they may not have to be here the full five days, the week of the 18th, but we just have to see how it goes, so.
And town members have any use this firm?
Oh, you'll put me in a spot, but I would guess since probably, prior to them, we had Plant Moran. And it's probably, I'm gonna guess, it's probably been 12 to 14 years since, I'm guessing Plant Moran's last, excellent maybe.
Just so council aware and, and the plans are here to clarify, it's maybe the manager of stereotin has been our auditor for the time, they've been, I think, at least three different names during that time period. So it's been the same audit company for under three, they, they've basically been acquired and changed the names and then over during that period of time. So there's been different company names with the same auditor.
Exactly. The same personnel, the same lead auditor has been in for a number of years. And like I said, prior to them, I know we had Plant Moran and I'm, I'm just gonna make a guess, I would say it's probably been at least like 2006, 2008, maybe since we made the switch from Plant Moran to this current firm. So it's been a while.
And I'm looking at, I'm just wondering if anybody can reflect on it, just want to share how much, how much they have for that. Any questions for Director Meade? No, he's good job. Get up. Get up.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Do you have motion to approve Resolution 2022-13, uh, the application for admission of state housing development authority for the Monarch Program?
Some of them.
Support.
City Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Council, you guys originally approved this resolution back in December when, um, however, we utilized the 327th Avenue Road. Um, when receiving our additional approval from Mishta, it was determined that that, um, property was located within a floodplain and that they would not issue funding, um, to that, it just drives the cost up for the project, the homeowner would have to have additional insurance, and it just didn't, it was not feasible. So they, um, asked if we were able to determine or come up with a, a new site, which we have been able to. Uh, so we're looking to utilize Three O Seven East Cass Street, which is currently owned by the County Councilman Day, however, we are working with them to acquire that property. Um, at the next meeting, you will find a first agreement. Um, when we actually, Assistant Manager Ridge and I, and then Director Arnold, we had a presentation with Mishta last week, and they were very excited that we have been able to come up with, uh, a new property to utilize this program, that they were a little worried that we were, that we have to pull out, so they were very excited that we are going to continue, um, to move forward with that. There has been some changes at the EDC level. Um, when we originally applied for this, we were doing as a joint application, however, they are down to just one employee. So the city is taking the lead on this program, we will be fully responsible for this. Again, this is to, um, build a modular home here on a vacant property to encourage workforce housing and just, um, homeownership, homeownership within our community. Um, so we're really excited to, to continue to move forward with that. Uh, Mishta just has requested an updated resolution, um, noting the new property, um, interplace of the 327th Avenue Road, so that is what you have before you, um, for approval.
Do you have questions for City Mayor Snyder? City Clerk Miguel?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve vehicle lease for a public safety patrol car?
Some of them.
For.
Jika? You might have another question?
Um, we've been purchasing one patrol car a year, uh, for about as long as I've been chief. Uh, we have to replace the cars after they get to about a hundred and twenty thousand miles per our insurance. Uh, the vehicle that we'll be replacing right now, I think is about a hundred and seven thousand miles on it. Um, the, it's been taking almost a year to get these vehicles in at this time, mostly because of the issues that we've had with COVID. So, um, currently, we just took possession of a pickup truck the first of the year, um, it just got stripped, we're still waiting on the, uh, equipment to be put into it, and that, that was approved this time last year, so I'm not expecting this car to be here until next year, but, um, the money for this is already budgeted. What we're requesting here is it'll allow us to go into a lease for this as the budget would require, uh, the same amount of money in next year's budget and the year after that's budget. Yeah, so.
Questions for Jika?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, so I know it's all already embedded into the budget, but just to confirm, uh, we're approving this for fiscal year 2021, and then you receive the vehicle next year?
This being 2022.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yep, and then, the vehicle could come sooner, uh, we're gonna buy a Dodge Durango this year.
Sorry, I forget, we're already in twenty twenty-two, so sorry.
Um, the, we're gonna get a Dodge Durango, which may be able to get here sooner, but I'm just not sure, usually the build time on those, they, they build them in August and we get them first of September, which is when the truck was supposed to show up, I just don't know. Um, and then it's a process of getting them into the outfitter to get all the emergency equipment put on them after that, so that takes time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do actually expect this to be a little less in cost from what is actually budgeted, only because, um, some of the equipment, like the video system, we've already purchased those, so, um, I, that won't be included in this budget in particular, so I just don't know what that's gonna be.
City Clerk Miguel?
Councilmember Leno?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Do you have motion to approve the MDOT Permits Preservation Board?
Some of them.
Support. Director Milligan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is just a update from MDOT for their permitting. Um, it basically allows us to get a permit through MDOT to work along the, their roadway. Uh, this dignifies the city manager, myself, the chief, and the two superintendents, uh, to be able to pull up a permit through, permit through MDOT. So, it's pretty simple.
I read it, you gotta be careful.
Yeah.
You should be careful now.
Do you have questions for Mayor Milligan? City Clerk Miguel?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve a proposal to complete, uh, the application for the North Albion Street Bridge replacement project?
Some of them.
Second.
Do you have any?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, so as part of the North Albion Street Bridge replacement project, we are required to complete and submit Section 106, um, State Historic Preservation, to the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIBO, um, to be, uh, part of that process just includes a desktop review of the historical structure and the natural resources within or adjacent to the project site. This information was included and the application is submitted to, um, SHIBO in February by White Men Associates. However, due to the age of that, the structure, they are requesting additional information. That, um, bridge structure was first built in nineteen thirty, so it dates a long time ago, so they're just asking a little bit more information. Um, so the additional information includes just a more detailed history of the bridge as well as an assessment and determination of eligibility, eligibility for the bridge. Um, this, they cannot complete the review until, um, the additional information is provided. So the additional scope was not budgeted within White Men's proposal because it's typically not required for projects, but however, just due to the age of the structure, they, we are, um, required to submit, um, the additional information. So the proposed fee to address the comments and resubmit the application is seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, city registration is recommending approval, so we can continue to move forward with that because I know we all received comments on when is this bridge going to be replaced, and it cannot be replaced until this is completed.
City Clerk Jackson? Yes, so I read, read all that, exactly what you just said. So was it during the conversation that, um, WG had with them, I mean, what, White Men Associates had with them, or you had a discussion?
So, no, so check, they, uh, White Men Associates submitted our application, then they were seeing, they issued a notice to Sam Leach, he is the prime, the head engineer working on this proposal, so we just had a, uh, a meeting with them at the, last week. Um, they brought forward this additional request of information, so now we'll bring it to, um, Council for, for approval.
So it's just added to that project, that's safe?
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. This is not to be taken seriously, but is there any way they can accelerate us, that they see how old it is?
No, the bridge now is set for 2023, so we can't begin to receive that. But when they are working along, I will, um, I've provided information in my mayor's report that, or cover that we've already determined the model and the design for that bridge structure. So work is being done, but this is just kind of holding up that process right now.
It is ridiculous, because, you know, I went down, I was looking through some, uh, papers at the park today, and three years ago, when we went down up under there and looked, you, you could see big pieces of the, of the stuff just rusted off and hanging, so it's really dangerous.
It's in terrible condition. That's why it's down to now one lane of traffic. Um, we've talked with our, um, Sam, who is one of our bridge inspectors, you have to stay within that one lane, that is, uh, what has been approved, that is safe. Uh, but we are, yes, they are aware that bridge is in terrible condition, and we're, we're excited to get that replaced next year.
Do you have a question for Council? City Clerk Miguel?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. And our last item is, uh, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2214 to recognize Walk the Bee Albion, um, as a non-profit organization to obtain the naming license from the state legislature?
Some of them.
Support.
So, yeah, in the packet, um, Walk the Bee, they need to get council permission and tell them to do raffles as a fundraising, so that is why we have this resolution, so they can get moving forward on this. Um, I believe they probably have things in mind in regards to fundraising, um, that's why this is in the public.
Um, just one thing I would suggest, um, I, I just checked with licensing, regular repairs to verify their status, and their, their official name is Walk the Bee Albion Inc., and just knowing how finicky the state can be with approval, I would just suggest somebody making an amendment to change the name to Walk the Bee Albion Inc. throughout the resolution, just so for some reason, if the state makes an issue out of that, it's no longer an issue.
I move to approve Resolution 2022 dash fourteen with Walk the Bee Albion Inc. as an amendment.
Any support?
Sure. You already.
Let's have this. City Clerk Miguel?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Future agenda items, would you like, anything?
I think I asked them future agenda items last week to have one put on, but not last week, but the last time we had a meeting about, uh, charges for, for park pavilions for some entity.
Yes, did you receive my email with the park application requesting that to include in the packet for, okay, I will resend it to you, I did send it to you, I believe it was the week after our meeting, just asking that these be completed to go along with that agenda item, so I will resend.
Oh, would you resend that, please?
Yep.
Thank you, because I, I, there's three, three things that I really think need to not be charged, so, thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a question? Councilwoman, I'm tired of you.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I just wanted to confirm that the introduction to the update of the rules of procedure would be on the next agenda, and then I am requesting a, um, an item for discussion and approval, um, to create a public statement or press release regarding the process that the city took to do redistricting. Um, and I can provide a blurb to convey kind of more of what I'm thinking, um, to include in the packet, um, but just so that we're all approaching the concerns of the public about that in a, in a uniform, consistent way.
Just, there are a few of, I, I, my office is currently working on and working with attorney attorneys to develop, develop language for the potential road village, and I will cover my management's report, we have scheduled the first round hall meeting on May that we will start to engage with our residents, but, um, that valid language needs to be approved by Council prior to submitting it to the county, I believe that is May, May term, or just rather get that done and make sure that we are submitted to the county manager.
Maybe add in the, the city.
Yep, and then we will have, I sent out the, um, patching plan, 2022 patching plan, but, um, Director Arnold will formally present that at next meeting as well.
And any other key bridge items? You have a report?
Oh, the, the.
I'm sorry, the cabinet. And anybody like to address the council in regards to, um, any packet? Do we have a way? City Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I included an updated report at your desk. As you can see, it has been a busy two weeks. Um, and how, starting off, just the overview of each item that was included in my report. So I held one-on-one meetings with each of the city department heads on Tuesday, March second, so the purpose of these meetings is to get a better understanding of the current department, um, projects, current needs within those departments, and identify ways that the city manager's office can better assist, um, them as well as their staff. I will be scheduling similar meetings, similar one-on-one meetings with all, every single city employee, just to make sure everyone's voice is heard, look at if they're happy, um, what, areas of improvement, um, it's important, I think, I feel like it's important to get everyone's input in making, um, just improving the culture and the works, um, work environment for our city. Um, Rental Certification Subcommittee, so the Rental Certification Subcommittee, they met on Wednesday, March twenty-third. Um, Director Arnold provided the subcommittee with a draft ordinance for their review and feedback. Um, so next steps, um, Director Arnold will work with the city attorney to prepare the draft ordinance with the city's property maintenance code. Um, that ordinance, the two just insert, they're consistent with each other. I believe that subcommittee then would like to engage with the landlords, or Director Arnold will be, um, setting up meetings with landlords just to get their feedback, just to share the process that we're taking to develop this ordinance, um, so that, um, that continues to be a work in progress. As I stated earlier in the meeting, the Recreation Advisory Commission, they met on Wednesday, March twenty-third, they reviewed the city's CDPG public gathering spaces application for Victor Park, um, and the commission was very supportive of, um, the identified projects. Um, as I also stated earlier, that, um, city administration, myself, Assistant City Manager Ridge, and Director Arnold, we met with members from Mishta on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, just to present the newly identified site, um, with Three O Seven East Cass Street. Um, they are very supportive of the site and very happy that the city is moving forward with the program. Hopefully this, we are able to complete this program and spur continued, um, use of the Mishta mob program to have more modular housing, um, brought to our community. So very excited, um, to keep that process going. Um, I attended the Summer Point River Cutting Ceremony for their new facility on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, so that new location is located within, um, inside Albion College at the Monger Building at 301 East Michigan Ave. It was a great event, nice trout, and it's a very nice facility. So if you have not had the chance to, um, check them out, I would strongly encourage you to stop in and just check out the new facility, it is a very nice office. Just, this is for information purposes. Um, so the Michigan Department of Treasury, they announced on Thursday, March twenty-fourth that they will be making, the distributions is in the next week to municipalities and counties that have adult-use marijuana facilities in their jurisdiction. So the dis- distributions will cover the taxes and fees collect, collected in state fiscal year 2021 under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. So cities, villages, townships, and counties, um, they will be receiving roughly forty-two point two million dollars under this act. Um, the distribution rate for, um, 2021 is slightly over fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars per licensed marijuana retail store and microbusiness. Um, as part of that act, revenues are, they're distributed as follows, so fifty percent, fifteen percent go to municipalities, um, who have marijuana retail stores and marijuana microbusinesses. Another fifteen percent goes to counties in which these marijuana stores and micro, um, businesses are located, thirty-five percent to the school aid fund to be used for K through twelve education, and then the third and five percent to Michigan Transportation Fund to be used for the repair and maintenance of roads and bridges. So just under the chair that, which you, um, municipalities and different cities, villages, they are receiving a lot of money for having these types of facilities located within their jurisdiction. I can sure, if we account for county, they will be receiving roughly over a million dollars for the different businesses that we have located, um, within our county. Um, and these are unrestricted funds, dollars, they can be applied to any area within the city's budget. So that's just, um, information for you all. The Albion Chamber of Commerce, uh, myself and City Manager Ridge, we met with, um, the Chamber President, Billy Beers, on Monday, March twenty-eighth. We just discussed upcoming chamber events in ways the city and Chamber can partner together. I did share with you now that they are reinstating their festivals and event committees. This is open to all residents, um, elected officials, anyone who is wanting to help plan any upcoming chamber events, festival before, it's Albion and Low. Um, they really would like to hear and get participation from all city residents. Those, it's not Heather, did I, I believe it's, um, can't think of the date, can't think of the date, but I will, um, share that, I will follow up with that, but just if you're interested in serving on those, on, on the committee, please contact early, we are the director of, um, the chamber. Our code enforcement position. But just if you're interested in serving on those on the committee, please contact her. We are the director of the chamber. Our code enforcement position, so we had interviews for that code enforcement officer position. They were held on Monday, March 28. And I'm happy to share that a conditional offer of employment has been made. So hopefully, we're looking to have that, that position filled here in the very near future. The Albion Dam feasibility study, so the second meeting for the Albion Dam feasibility study was held on Tuesday, March 29. The group discussed the goals, objectives, and schedules for the feasibility study. I attached the meeting agenda for your, for your reference. I have not yet received the official minutes from that meeting. But once I do, I'll be sure to include that in my next managers' report so that everybody is informed. On-site data collection will begin the week of April 11. I know right now they are working to get door hangers out to all of the properties that are blocked up to the river and that will be affected by, by possible changes to, if we do remove those dams. So we are trying to engage with our residents, inform them on the process. In the meeting, we stress that that is very important as we move forward with that process. We want to make sure nothing is being hidden or feel like a sneak attack in making a decision. So we will be scheduling a public meeting to share the results of that study and to discuss next steps. So more information will follow as we continue, continue that process. As I just stated, Director Miller and I met with White Men Associates on Tuesday, March 29 to review the type, size, and location plan for the North Albion Street Bridge. So the T S and L plan includes the overall improvements at the site, such as the bridge length, width, and type of bridge proposed. So the proposed structure is a 70-foot span-spread concrete box beam bridge. A 10-foot wide non-motorized path has also been incorporated on the east side of the roadway to connect Towne Park. This non-motorized path will also tie into the Albion River Trail. We just submitted our grant application to the M D N R. So it's a nice way to kind of tie all of those projects together. So now that the, we have finalized that plan, it will then be submitted to end up for review and approval sometime here in April. And just to restate that, that bridge is scheduled to be replaced in April 23. So motion is happening behind the replacement of that. It's just, you know, it's been a long time coming. And once 2023 is here, we'll be very happy to see that bridge replaced. We also met with white man associates on Tuesday, the 29th, to review the Haven Road Tree Project, scope and limits. So as I reported in my March 21st managers' report, the city requested there are access funds available for the federal surface transportation, urban, local program. So we, we originally requested $240,000. And we were awarded the maximum amount, which is $175,000. So with the additional grant funding, that project's scope has been expanded to cover street improvements along River Drive up to South Superior Street. Preventive maintenance work will begin on the bridge. That will start this summer with full reconstruction occurring next year. And that will occur from River Drive, from South Superior Street, all the way to 23 Mile Road. So the dollars that we receive, the funding that we receive is very specific to certain roadways. That's why this road has been chosen. Unfortunately, it does not apply to, to our local roads. So this funding breakdown, the total construction cost is $980,000. We are able to attain, obtain $750,000 from the S T P fund, another $40,602 from the highway infrastructure program, and just with an estimated local match of $187,500 from the city street funds. The Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, we met on Tuesday, March 29 to review the full draft of the city's five-year comprehensive plan. The draft plan will now go before the city's Planning Commission on April 19 for their review. So we're happy to have that process almost be completed. A big shout out to Beck and O'Raidr, who has assisted us with the update of this plan. The draft plan will be available for review for 63 days. So please encourage your constituents and residents to take the time to review their plan, give feedback, give comment on that. Following the review period, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing. So a notice will be published to make the public aware and ask that they come out, provide their comment on, on the new plan. And once that public hearing is held, the Planning Commission will make their recommendations to city council, and then you all will formally approve that comprehensive plan. I have the honor to participate as a speaker at the 2022 National Forum for Black Public Administrators Conference in Grand Rapids last Wednesday, March 30. It was a very inspiring event to be a part of. And I'm very thankful to the Michigan Municipal League for inviting me to participate and to share my experience in the 1650 program. And just, I'm very thankful to have been given the opportunity to represent Albion at that national conference. Happy to share that the city's Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application has been submitted to the M D N R for the Albion River Trail expansion. City council, you guys approved that resolution at the last component meeting. So this is just expanding the River Trail along North Albion Street and then tying into Macintosh Park. So that was submitted last Thursday, March 31. Just to share some, a recently announced grant opportunity. So the M E B C recently announced that they are accepting applications for new projects under the State of Michigan's Community Development Block Grant, 2022 Water Related Infrastructure Program. So this C D G grant opportunity is designed to assist local units of government in making necessary improvements to their existing public infrastructure. The grant request is between $500,000 and $2 million with a required 10% match. So the city took advantage of this program back in 2017 for the Urban Avenue Street Improvement Projects. I believe this could be a great opportunity to take advantage or seek funds for deeming and holding drives around the Macintosh Park. You know, with the addition to the improvement to that park space, that's going to become, I feel, a very hot destination here in our community. Not only for that, but the residents who live along those roadways, they deserve to have improved water and sewer infrastructure as well as the roadway to be fully replaced. So the cost estimate provided by White Men Associates, it includes the replacement of the water and sewer drains and full road reconstruction for a total cost of $1.8 million. So they're going back to regain that estimate to see, make sure that aligns with current pricing as well as you're able to include streetscaping. So they will look if, if that is, the reconstruction cost is just $1.8 million, we'll also add in the landscaping along that work with, excuse me, as well. So we're working with them to get an application created. Similar to the public hearing that was held tonight, if we're going to take advantage of that, we need to hold another public hearing before applying for that. But I would, city administration, we're fully in support of utilizing that area for this grant opportunity. The application is due on May 13. So we will begin getting that public hearing notice published to make sure that the community is aware so that they can come, come out and provide feedback. This is just another great opportunity for the city to leverage local funds to make lasting, meaningful, and much-needed improvements. The 2022 Tree Dump Schedule has been published. It will be open on select Saturdays from April 2nd through December 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The only items that will be accepted are limbs, brush, shrubs, leaves, and grass clippings. No other materials will be accepted. You have to purchase your tree dump pass, which I believe is $20. You can obtain that from the front window here at City Hall. And I did include that schedule in the packet. But it's also been published on our Facebook page and on the website as well as the local paper. The Cowan County Scrap Tire Event will be held on Thursday, June 30 at Ketchum Field. Once the time has been made available, I will share that information with everyone. So accepted items are residential passenger tires, with and without rims, semi-truck tires, with and without rims. Anything larger than a semi-truck will not be accepted. So now is the time, it's hard to believe summer will be here before we know it, but it's time to do our screen cleaning and get all of our unwanted items ready to be disposed of. And the city's Citywide Cleanout Event will be held on Saturday, June 25 at Ketchum and Harris Field. So stay tuned for more information. We will share with you the terms for that event. A city-wide town hall meeting to discuss the potential road village has been scheduled for Monday, April 11, from 6:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. at the Marshall Opportunity School Library. That's at 225 East Watson Street. They encourage all residents to come out and hear about the draft project clear and the proposed, what the proposed funding would do for our local roads. This is the first of many. We want to engage with our residents as much as possible because it's essentially up to them if we can obtain this additional dollar funding. So City Hall will be closed on Friday, Friday, April 15, in observance of Good Friday. Normal hours of operation will resume on Monday, April 18. And the last thing, I received a few concerns from different residents about an email that was sent out by Granger pertaining to the yard waste collection. The current service agreement with Granger states users are allowed unlimited yard waste disposal with 96, with a 96-gallon container in paper yard waste bags. I think the email stated that you could utilize your container and then only five yard waste bags. So I have emailed Scott Truman, who is our account manager, account rep, to just clarify why that is in this issue. And just work on what is in our current service agreement. So once I receive a response, I will follow up with council on that. And that is all I have.
Yeah. Council members, we're still here. It's been a busy two weeks. Council members.
I, I did just, I just wanted to say, not a question, but that was very long. So thank you for doing that, making sure people who are listening and haven't had a chance to read this know all the hard work that you and the city staff are doing. And just truly thank you.
I'm sorry if I sound like I'm out of breath. I'm starting to have some pressure against my lungs, but bear with me, I'm okay.
Oh, I also just wanted to say, I mean, in terms of, of grant funding, I know I saw in the economic forecast quite a bit of grant funding that you've received, but it seems like even more is coming in. And so I just want to highlight that. And, you know, I think that seeing, seeing those, those big projects that you're tackling and recognizing the grant writing that you're doing, with that having been such a big concern for people, is, is very helpful.
Well, thank you. And just to share, the Governor Whitmerker office, they announced additional funding geared towards infrastructure, roads, bridges, dams. I can't remember the exact one. I believe Commissioner Tompkins shared on that. However, we're now, since that announcement has been made, we're now waiting on the different state entities that those funds will be distributed to to come up with the formal grant process. Just to kind of give you an idea of timeline, unfortunately, nothing moves fast within government. So the, the grant dollars that were put towards the M E B C Public Gathering Spaces Grant, those were awarded around this time last year with the application just being released early, early this year. So it does take some time for them to come up with the different grant opportunities. But my office as well as the different department heads, we are making sure we keep up to date with that. And we will jump on and take advantage of any grant funding that is made available.
That's good, yeah. It shows. Council members.
Just, just one thing I wanted to remind council of the upcoming town hall. When you have ballot measures like this coming up, particularly on local items such as this, it's important to remember that when information is presented to your constituents and by both the administration and by consumers, that we're just providing information. The city is prohibited from advocating in favor of the village because that would in effect be using city resources to basically further political thing, which we cannot do. So I just, it is absolutely acceptable to provide information, you know, what the village will do, how much money it will generate, how long it goes, et cetera, et cetera. But council members and members of the administration are specifically prohibited by law from advocating in favor or against the ballot.
Again, there are extra flyers. Feel free to take them and distribute them to any of your constituents, residents that you come into contact with. We have published this notice on our Facebook page as well as it's been issued out to the paper, the State Street Paper. So please help us get the word out to as many people as possible. And I just want to reiterate, this is the first of many town halls. We're looking to hold some earlier in the day to give people, the afternoon, who may work the night shift or later, the opportunity, but in the afternoon, an opportunity to come out and to learn this information as well.
Ronnie Stoves did ask for us to announce that there is a Crane Mother's Day musical that will be held Saturday, April 30 at the Ball Theater. And the program will start at 6:00 p.m. And tickets will be sold for this event. And if you have questions, you can ask for assistance. This Saturday, at Victor Park, it's called Quack. There is the Easter egg hunt that is being put out by Nathan Haga Fuentes. Please promote that for the kids. They have tons of gifts to give away to the children. They're trying to make this the largest Easter egg hunt in the state of Michigan. So I don't know specifically how many eggs they're putting out, but.
25,000?
Yeah, I think they posted today 25,000.
It's at noon. I know initially they said nine, but I think because of the weather.
Oh.
I wanted to push it back a little bit.
Yeah.
So it'll be noon at Victor Park for Saturday.
Age groups up to 10 years old, so.
Bill Chief fifty in a bunny suit.
Please.
They are using the bunny suit that the city has. I don't know who will be.
Who is going to be a bunny?
Who will be.
May I have a question?
Chief, get your action.
Mayor Thomas. Okay, what should do in your?
Someone.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We did get communication from Purple Mall that she was turning up on the night. So do I have a motion to excuse Purple Mall?
Someone.
Someone, of course. City board, can you go?
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
What should I turn?
Someone.
Of course.
City board, can you go?
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yep.
Jackson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Snyder.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, 9:00, 7:00 p.m.